Road or congestion.
At 6:30 PM, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And Renee, if I could please have a roll.
Mr. Brewer.
Here.
Mr. Parker.
Here.
Ms. McCowen. Mr. McDaniel.
Here.
Ms. Byrd.
Here.
Mr. McClure. Mr. Griffith.
Here.
Ms. Kendall.
Here.
Mr. Jablonsky.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, and I just want to thank Sean Axton for his time on the commission and welcome Maria Kendall, our newest commissioner. Welcome to the commission. I'm going to move on to our consent docket, starting with item number one, minutes. Consideration of approval rejection amendment and/or postponement of the minutes of the November 10th, 2022 Regular Planning Commission meeting. And that is our only consent item. Any member of the commission wish to remove any item from the consent docket? Any member of the audience wish to remove any item from the consent docket? I would entertain a motion.
Move to it, Bruce.
Second.
And a vote.
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried seven to zero.
Moving to our first non-consent item, item number two, consideration of adoption rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O-2223-14. Midway Grocery Inc. requests rezoning from C1 Local Commercial District to Spud's Simple Planned Unit Development for 0.234 acres of property located at 601 West Ufala Street. This item has been withdrawn from the application, from the, by the applicant. So that is all we're doing on item two. Moving on, items number three, four, and five. Item three, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment, and, yeah, all three together. Consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of R-2223-54, Subtext Acquisitions LLC. Request amendment of the Norman 2025 land use plan for commercial designation to high-density residential designation for approximately 9.66 acres of property generally located on the west side of Classen Boulevard, north of East Constitution Street. Item number four, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of O-2223-17, Subtext Acquisitions LLC. Requests rezoning from C2 General Commercial District to PUD planned unit development for approximately 9.66 acres of property generally located on the west side of Classen Boulevard, north of East Constitution Street. And item number five, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP-2223-4. Consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Subtext Acquisitions LLC, Kim Lee Horn, for the Verb Norman for approximately 9.66 acres of property generally located on the west side of Classen Boulevard, north of East Constitution Street. Got my motion as I went, taking the staff report. Thank you.
Hi, Laura Hoggett with the Planning Department. Sorry, I kind of jumped the gun up here. So we have an application from Subtext Acquisitions LLC for three different things. We have a 2025 land use and transportation plan amendment from commercial to high-density residential. There is floodplain designation on this property as well, but they're not changing that. And then here we have a map showing our 2025 designations. Sorry, right now it's commercial, and they're switching to high-density. And then you can see the green kind of going through the southern portion, which is the floodplain. And then rezoning, it's currently C2 and A2, and they're proposing a planned unit development. And they're also proposing a preliminary plat. They'd like to do a multifamily apartment complex. So here's the existing zoning. There's some apartments across Classen to the east, and then west, no, sorry, east across 12th is also an apartment complex. And then the corner, the, let's see, northwest corner is where the 7-Eleven is, and then across Constitution, what's the name of that diner that's there now? Anyway, it's restaurants, commercial, sorry. Okay, the OU Motel is the kind of U-shaped development that's there now. And then in the southern portion, there's a lot of floodplain. They have already gone to a floodplain permit committee and been approved, and it's vacant on the southern portion. Here's an aerial. There did used to be a city street that went kind of along the eastern edge of their property. There's right-of-way there. So this is looking south, where the OU Motel is now, and then there's the vacant land south of that. So this is looking south on Classen. This is the vacant southern portion where there is some pavement, but they're going to tear that out. Looking north on Classen. Looking east over at the apartments across the street. And then south, yeah, looking south on Classen. And then this is kind of just show like the Walmart, and then there's the apartments over this way, and the 7-Eleven's back on the right of the photo. Here's their site development plan. So they have one big building. It could be five stories in height with parking surrounding it. There is a communications tower on the north, and then the floodplain down here where they're going to have amenities for their residents. And then here's their preliminary plat. That's the end of the staff presentation. So I'm available for questions. The applicant is here with a presentation as well.
Any questions for staff?
Oh, it is now, yay, technology. Just a question, that, the southern end is heavily treed, and so it may be a little trivial to ask, but are there plans to replace any trees that are destroyed because of the development?
Yes, I think they're going to go.
I thought the ordinance was two for one, two to one, so for every tree you take out, you have to replace two?
And I think they proposed to put in, is it 20 trees? All right.
So just an adjacent question. Doing a PUD that will lock in the ordinance for this, right? So I assume that if there is an existing rule, that this, whatever we agree to, if we move it forward, that that would be the new, the new rule?
Yes, whatever's in their PUD document for landscaping and for trees would be what they're held to moving forward. But on the south side where the floodplain is, they can't, you can't really disturb the land at all without getting a floodplain permit. And then they would also have to come back through this process to amend their site plan. So other than dog parks, frisbee golf kind of courses, there's not a lot they could do without coming back there. Sorry, without coming back there.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the staff or regarding any of the ordinances before we have the applicant come up? I think they'll probably address the question of how many trees will be in there.
I have a question. What are the city rules on digital billboards?
What exactly?
There's a sign ordinance, so it would all be.
If you'll, I'll grab it really quick if you want. Or do you have yours?
I do not have mine, no. But if we could, could we hear the applicant's presentation while we look that up? Typically, we.
What exactly did you?
Yeah, what is your exact question regarding the?
Well, well, this is the first time I've seen a billboard put inside of a PUD, right? So there's an existing billboard, and inside the proposal from the applicant is to replace it with a digital billboard.
Correct.
And so the PUD's going to lock in whatever the ordinance is. And so before, before we just let something happen, I'd like to know what the, what the existing rules are, to see what the difference is going to be.
We'll look that up while the applicant's doing their presentation.
Thank you.
Any other staff questions?
Sorry.
Okay, seeing none, we would love to hear the applicant presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, and I would love to give you a presentation. Sean Rieger representing the applicant tonight, and thank you for your questions. I'll, let me address those real quick just before we get going. So the trees, the PUD, commissioner does show that we would add 20 trees to the site. We don't believe there'll be much disruption below, and I'll show you the line, below the line into that area. The parking lot will go into that area a little bit, but then beyond that, probably we don't really anticipate any disruption. I'll show you that in just a moment. Billboard, yes, there's an existing billboard on the site. If you recall, it's kind of behind the 7-Eleven, and this proposes basically that that billboard can be converted to a digital sign. I don't remember myself whether billboards are, what your, what your status is on that. In Norman, typically, I will tell you, billboards are not allowed except for on I-35, but this one has been there for a long time. I don't know how many years ago that one got put in, so we are basically just making sure it is in the code. It could, it's an existing sign, so it's not an addition, but that's, that's that one. So let me take you through, and then, of course, please ask me again if I don't clarify enough on that. So, all right, so this is a student housing project. Important for you to know that and understand that. Subtext is proposing a student housing project. Really, as, as we all know, the SEC is coming to OU, and will, they are anticipating, we're hearing anywhere from 5,000 to 10,000 to 15,000 new students coming to OU and expanding. I know about two weeks ago, I was at Max Westheimer Airport where they were presenting the plan for just one school to go from 250 students to 600. That's the aviation school at OU, and that's just one school at OU. So we are hearing all kinds of things, how OU will be expanding significantly is what the anticipation is. So this is a student housing project to deal with that. They would propose to open in 2025, so a couple of years down the road. We wanted to show you this screenshot, though, as this is City GIS, to show you the current footprint of OU, and you see the site is just on the right there. You see the yellow site right there. So this is, we feel a really perfect site for a student housing project, and I'm going to show you in just a slide or two how there is a lot of student housing projects right around this, in this area. And when you start thinking about student housing around OU, we've done many projects over the years. A lot of them have been off the southeast corner of OU. I can recall the last kind of slew that came through, the View and the Grove and Campus Crest and the cottages, all of those over here on the southeast side of OU. So it is a natural place for student housing to go in the history of our housing around OU. Here's the particular site, and Laura showed you this as well, so I won't spend much time on this, but I will show you, you see the yellow outline of our site. To the left is the OU Golf Course. And then if you look just lower to the right, this, and forgive me if I don't remember the current names of these, I probably should have memorized those, but this is Aspen Heights as it was developed. I recall that zoning not too many years ago, and that's a student housing project. This one right below it was built as a student housing project. I'm not sure what their percentage is nowadays as to whether it's 100% students or not. And just north of this site is the Edge property that is heavily laden with students as well. So again, this area of Norman, heavily populated by students all around. What we think is very unique about this site, and I think good, is that on the left you have OU, an OU Golf Course. On the right, also you have the railroad right on the left, and you have a major corridor of Classen and 12th. And then the only abutting adjacency is another apartment complex. So we're not next to single-family housing, and I could tell you from experience, when I've done student housing next to single-family housing, it's been a battle. I remember the cottages on Yom Hof was next to the Oakhurst neighborhood to the north, and it was very hard fought. The neighbors didn't really want to be next to a student housing project as a single-family neighborhood. So this one doesn't have those problems. This one has adjacencies that we think are very natural for a student housing project. And you can kind of see that in the existing 2025. When you look at it, this site is zoned commercial or is planned commercial, but as we know nowadays, commercial is really kind of receding, and unless you're, if you're mid-block and not on a major corridor, commercial is, is having challenges nowadays to get off the ground. So, so converting this to student housing and multifamily is, is a good natural flow, and you could see around it, just to the side of it on the right and to the north, is also high-density residential. Zoning, again, also very intense around this. The yellow single-family you see up to the north, but immediately around this is, is heavy intensity, is high-density RM6, PUDs, commercial. So it fits right into a slot, we think, that has good buffering adjacencies. And we think it's a good infill project. When you think of infill, infill, we talk about a lot in planning. We talk about sites that are skipped over or sites that are prone to move to a much higher density. We think this fits that perfectly because this site has quite a bit of undeveloped ground on it, and the parts that are developed, this, this part, for instance, just north is really, it's owned by a church, but I don't know that it's occupied or used that way. That's the ownership of it, and then the OU Motel is, is that one site there. So it's a good infill project. So we think for all of those reasons, this is a good project, a good location for this project. This is the site plan, and I'll just point out a few things to you. This is the center of the site right there. You see the donut, as we usually call these donut concepts. You see it right there. That is the building, and I'll show you a better view of this in just a moment. With parking to the north and parking to the south, there are two entries, and I'll try to follow this with my pointer. Right there is the main entry to the site, and this is Classen as it comes off of 12th over here. So you come off of 12th, there's Classen, there's the main entry. So the main focus of this building is that corner, and I'll show you what this building is very preliminarily intended to look like, that we think will make a good presence on that corner. To the north is another entry right there. These are not gated, these are just open entries in and out. And then a few other particulars of this site, Laura mentioned the cell tower. There is an existing cell tower on this site. It's right up here under my pointer, and there is an ordinance that says you must keep 200 feet from a residence to a cell tower, and we have maintained that. So this building is about 200 and, and some feet away. In fact, I think that dash line right there is the 200-foot line right in there. So we're about a parking space depth away from that limit of cell tower distancing. You see a big dashed box up here. That is underground detention. And we see underground detention quite a bit sometimes in urban conditions where we need volume, we need capacity, and we can do it underground effectively in a very efficient way so that we can, we can go ahead and put parking over it. It still functions as an underground storage capacity, and then it would flow out of that coming to the south. The floodplain is to the south, you see it right here, and this all flows left or to the west and eventually on down to the Canadian River. This is not the Lake Thunderbird watershed, but the Canadian River. And so we are encroaching into the floodplain. You see a little bit right in here, and as Laura mentioned, this has gone before the floodplain committee and has been approved, subject to city council, of course. They have final approval on everything, but the floodplain committee looked at this and approved it, and we're, we're very pleased about that. So inside this donut concept is, as we see, a lot of these student housing projects have sort of a major amenity in the middle, in the courtyard, pool, and recreational space. That's certainly intended here as well. And then the main leasing area is off this corner over here on the right, the right point of it. Out front is some drop-off zones for things like door dash and things like that. They're common nowadays. And also there will be a bike and, and scooter area right out in front of this building in that location as well. There also will be likely electrical vehicle charging stations on this site. Not sure where yet, but the, the PUD allows for that. And then you see this sort of shaded pathway right here. What we're pretty excited about is the ability to have residents, first of all, use their interior courtyard space for the more sort of designed or, or resort pool kind of thing. But then if they want some passive recreation, they can walk out, and we have sort of a devoted, committed pathway through the parking lot to come over to here, where then they would enter into this more of a passive recreational space. We've put in the PUD, you can do things like frisbee golf, park benches, some walking areas down there, dog parks, some things like that that we think would, would work pretty well down in that area and, and be a useful commodity down in that floodplain. So that's what's intended there. Parking is about 535 spaces, and the parking on this is less than what our current code would require. We know that we've, we've done that before where we've taken away the minimums, and we appreciate that very much because in this space, Subtext has significant experience around the country. They know exactly how many parking spaces they likely will need, and thankfully, you've changed it to where we can then do that on our own. And I will tell you, the difference here is significant. If we had to follow the code of the city of Norman, we would have to build about 630 parking spaces if we had followed the code before you took away the minimums. We would have to build about 630 spaces. Now we can do it with really significantly less, down around 530. So we're appreciative of that, and we think that helps quite a bit that we've lowered that impervious parking surface. So, so we, we feel good about that. This is the green space diagram. It doesn't show the center of that donut. Also is open space, essentially probably hard pavement within, but you can see basically this whole southern edge of the whole floodplain area is basically left as green space, and if you do that across the whole site, it's only about an impervious area of about 42% of the whole site. So we're pretty pleased how that works out to have that southern open space. I should have mentioned too on the previous, another thing unique about this, and Laura kind of mentioned it, is that it used to be that this was a public street right here. If you follow my arrow right there, that was Classen. Back when I was a kid, Classen went down that arc, and it sort of slammed into 12th Avenue at some point. It was changed significantly at one point, but that right-of-way is still there, and there is still some hard pavement in that right-of-way, right in here. And we have discussions with the city that we are going to remove that hard pavement. There's no need for it anymore. It is basically an old dilapidated street that doesn't go anywhere. So it's not our property, it's your property, it's city norm properties, but our intention is to remove that concrete and that pavement when we do this project, and so that we can make that all green around that entire corner. All right, this is very preliminary. We always say that, please understand, very preliminary, but this is the anticipated imagery of it, five-story building. On the bottom there, what looks like two stories is essentially one story, and then with four stories of residential above it. This is the hard corner on the Classen side. You're looking from Classen and 12th corner towards this, and that main entry right there on the left. The door dash and bicycle and scooter areas would be across the front right over here. So there is no rooftop uses, we're not anticipating that. Inside, behind this again, is the courtyard space with the resort pool, pool and things of that nature. Plenary plat, very simple. This is one of your items tonight. Plenary plat is a one-lot plat, as we call it. So this would be one lot, one ownership across the entire site. And with that, just to summarize, we're amending 2025 from commercial and floodplain to high-density residential and floodplain. Plenary plat, one lot. Rezoning to a PUD that allows for this one single-purpose use, basically of apartment complex with a significant amount of amenities. Maximum of five stories, maximum of 650 beds. That's one thing I would mention, in these kind of projects, we usually label it as number of beds more than units, and so then they have a different mix within them of different bedroom combinations, and so the bed count is, is the number of, of maximum. Staff reports, we're very pleased with staff report. It says the addition of this use is consistent with the development patterns in this area of Norman. The staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat for the Verb, and the Transportation Impacts Report recommends approval as well. As you can see tonight, this is what we've experienced on this project. We've had nobody come to pre-development, we've had no protest, and really have had almost no contact with anybody on this project that's voiced any concerns. So with that, I appreciate your time, and we'll happy to answer any questions. We do have the whole team here, as you see. We'll answer any questions you have, and, and we would appreciate your support. Thank you.
All right, questions for the applicant?
I've got two. Continuity of the sidewalk off of that property down to the intersection, I mean, on the north side, you're going to connect, but can we get that taken around that curve all the way?
Yeah, let me address that, it was, it came up at pre-development, I take it back, at Green Belt Commission it came up, and the gentleman with Public Works says there is plans to connect that, is my understanding, it's in the staff report, it talks about this. So we anticipate that it will be built there. Now, technically, we are not allowed to build that because that's city norm property. We have to put sidewalks where we abut on our, the abutting part of our property, and you can see it going north, we're adding curb and gutter and sidewalks. That is off property, off-site. So there's been discussions of that. It's not in our plan to do that. Our understanding is the city's plan to do that, but that's what we anticipate, that at some point that will be connected.
Okay, and my next question was, Classen Boulevard through that section is begging to be a four lane, and I'm sure that that's planned. Has that been accommodated in this?
So there's a lot of discussion about that, too, and the staff report talks about it. I'll show you, you can kind of see it right here. It is, to answer your question, not going four lane, but we are committing to restriping it, and we understand it is wide enough to do this without having to widen it, so that there will be left turn lanes, and you can see them right here. So cars coming northbound will have a full left turn lane striped that they can get into, protected left turn lane, and then not disrupt traffic that is going by them to the north on both of these entry points. You can see it right there. So we anticipate, we intend fully as part of this project, to restripe that with left turns in. So it won't be widened to four lanes, but we will not be stacking anybody behind cars waiting to turn left.
Right, right. I just want to make sure, if it's not widened to four lanes now, that we have provision to do that in the future because it, on the north side coming down, it looks like there's a possibility of that, but that's my question.
One other point on that, if I may. We are adding 17 feet of right-of-way dedicating with this plat. So at some point, to answer your question, if the city wanted to expand it, we would be giving you an additional 17 feet of right-of-way that presumably, and I've seen public workers here that could talk about that, presumably they, they would be allowed to do that.
All right, perfect, thanks.
Realistically, it's probably better for the city to talk about this than me, but the right-of-way is what you'd be looking at as to what the city can and can't use for a street, whether they do or don't use it. Many times the right-of-way is bigger than the actual street, but that's where you would look at that right-of-way to see. And then if they were seeking to make it wider than what they had a right-of-way for, they would either need to negotiate that, or I guess you'd have to look at eminent domain, so, which I don't think that the city of Norman has typically shown a lot of favor towards, but, you know, that, that would be kind of the process on there. So thanks for addressing the 17 feet addition to, and the left turn lane, so. More questions for the applicant?
Sure. I think it looks like a great development. You know, I'll wait for the city on that answer about the billboard, but while we're waiting, I do want to circle back to my fellow commissioners' question about trees. How many trees are y'all planning to take out?
I do not know the answer to that, Commissioner Jablonsky. Glance at the aerial, we, I don't have an answer to that. We could probably get that answer before city council and, and take a look at it. We, we would have to count that on a survey and, and take a look. The project is going down, if you look at this aerial, the project is going down to, I'm just being very rough here, but it's roughly somewhere in this area is where that parking lot is, is going down to. And so presumably these trees in here most certainly would be coming out. You see them right, sort of that little grove right there, would be what I would anticipate would come out. I don't have a number for you, though.
Another question comes to mind, you know, when I was looking at this, obviously you need a lot of pavement, but that's, that's a lot of heat in the summer. Is there, is there any way to mitigate that kind of heat in summer? Because summers are getting hotter.
I don't know of any way at all. I practiced architecture for about five years, I will tell you. I remember then when they were making the shift to white roofs, and that was something that was in that effort, for different reasons as well, black to deteriorate quicker. So I think they've made some gains on that, on top of buildings. I'm not aware of anything on parking lots, and I would just kind of turn, I don't know if anybody, I'm looking at Lydia, and we're not aware of anything else on parking lots that would do that, but that, that would be all I would know of.
I was going to ask what Kevin thought about the underground detention, because I know that that's something that is a passion project of his, and I- because I know that that's something that is a passion project of his, and I thought he might like to speak to that.
Yeah, if the city will ever let me dig up Andrews Park, we'll do it. And I've talked with Eric about this. No, I actually know a lot about underground detention. I think it's great. It's a lot of big box stores in cities with heavy restrictions. Fayetteville, Arkansas is one. They've had to move to those. It gives us great storage. They can park, no problems, easy to clean. There's lots of advantages to them, and I'm a proponent. And if Norman's moving that way, then I say keep doing it because it it gives us storage options here where we don't have a lot of usable space. So and it's, I think it can be more aesthetic in some instances instead of dry ponds.
Yeah, I know of a couple of sites in Norman that there's it's been done before Norman. OEC off 24th Avenue, when they expanded their property, has a significant underground storage.
Yeah, Memorial, the Memorial Stadium underneath the statues on the south side has one. And then Headington Hall has one in the middle of that courtyard also.
Thanks for the expert opinion.
No problem.
Appreciate that. And then I just, since trees have come up a lot, I just wanted to, just for one last point of clarification, retouch two things together. So there is this grove that looks like it's going to be coming out. We didn't have a set number, but the PUD is adding 20 trees.
That's correct.
Okay. Just, I don't know if there's any more concerns about that, but I just wanted to get it all in one sentence.
That's correct.
So I'm new, so I'm just going to ask a question to clarify that. So are you saying that you're putting only 20 trees in or you're putting 20 trees in addition to the two-to-one of what's coming out?
The 20 is all that is proposed to put in. The two-for-one, and Commissioner, let me address that. I'm not aware of an ordinance that requires that. That has been done in the past. I've seen that done. We've written in some PUDs in the past, but I don't believe, and I'm turning to Jane here, or Beth I know is in the back. I'm not aware of an ordinance that requires that. So right now, the proposal in this PUD is 20 new trees.
Okay. And you pointed to the grove, but I am imagining you're going to be making improvements all around the building and existing parking lot. So any existing trees in those areas are likely to come out as well?
Correct. And let me clarify that. Good point. So I don't mean just this grow. I was really kind of trying to point to the line of separation. Let me. So what I'm anticipating here is sort of from this line down is largely intended to be untouched. So we wouldn't need to do anything. So but from this line north, yes, virtually any tree from roughly that location north would be taken out. So if you go back to, if you kind of.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you indicate it on the same aerial photo that you did before?
That's what I'm going to try to. I don't have it specific line, but if you kind of imagine, you see where this this is going to, sort of around the middle of that curve. So if we go back, you could see it's it's somewhere up around in here, and you come down. So it's it's kind of what I was showing. I think it's roughly this sort of grove right in here. You see my pointer right there? Maybe easier to see on large screen.
But we've had we've had PUDs that protect areas as a green space, and this PUD doesn't have that.
It doesn't protect that grove. We need that amount of parking to do the.
Oh, I'm not worried about that. I'm thinking about the rest of it.
Can you bring up your green space slide?
I'm sorry.
Can you bring up your green space slide one more time?
This one, yeah. I think I see where you're saying, Commissioner, you're suggesting you want us to protect the trees down in that area. Is that correct?
Right.
Yeah, okay. I think we can, to the extent the engineering doesn't require anything different, would be something we'd have to think about. Come on up, Lydia. So Lydia Leslie with Kimley Horn Engineering.
Yes, I do want to clarify that for the floodplain allowance and where we're filling in the parking area, we're going to have to provide compensatory storage. So in order to do that, what we do is we we take the existing ground elevations and we lower it just for, you know, it's just in a floodplain situation, the flood would come in and have that area to have more storage capability at a larger depth. So in that area, we'll be needing to remove the trees there. So there are, Sean, if you'll show me the
Yeah.
the slide showing the floodplain, I can better.
That one.
Situate that. Or one of the other ones that had the.
And the project on it.
Yes, with the floodplain. Yes, there.
Ah, right there.
Okay. So the floodway area is shown in blue. That area, we're not touching at all. All the trees will remain in that area. We can't do any grading in that area. We cannot change anything in the floodway area. That's all in the blue area. So the area just south of the parking lot between that blue area is where we're going to be doing compensatory storage. And that is where we're going to be trying to lower the elevations. In that process, we will lose some trees, but that is an area where we're doing all of that active play area and and all the amenities area. So that'll be a green space still.
Maybe. So if you, thank you, Lydia. So yeah, I had forgotten there there compensatory storage right there. So if you imagine that that line coming through, then look back at the aerial. So a lot of that aerial, you see that line was kind of sweeping through here, is sort of that hard space right there. So there is some line there, Commissioner, where it will, as Lydia just explained, shift.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just one more comment about the trees. I presume that the trees will be distributed throughout the parking lot and the green space areas rather than specifically in the southern end.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have a follow-up on that sign question possibly? Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. So in the PUD narrative, they say that it will follow the height and the size requirements in the sign code. So for an off-premise billboard sign, you can have 672 square feet on each face, so on each side of the sign, and they can be up to 35 feet in height. So the sign that's there now is a legal non-conforming billboard sign, which would not be allowed to be converted to a digital sign if they never brought this application forward. With the approval of the PUD, they can make it digital. So it would be a legal digital sign. And digital signs can't, there's requirements for how bright they can be. They can't flash. They can't do police lights to get attention. They can't distract drivers, basically. Does that end?
It does. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you, Laura.
No, you're welcome.
Are there any remaining questions that need to be asked of either? Let's do the applicant first. Any other questions for the applicant we didn't address? Okay, seeing that there are no more remaining questions for staff, just clarifying, correct? Wonderful. Okay, I would move on to audience comments if there are any. Seeing none, planning commission discussion?
I'll I'll give a comment. I'm not a big fan of digital billboards just because of the light, especially light pollution within cities. I drove past the billboards on my way up this evening, and it's a pretty mellow yellow light. So I'm not a fan of that. Overall, I think it's a great project. I mean, it's great infill. The only one thing that I thought would be nice to see that we've seen in other PUDs is where you protect a green space in the PUD. That way, in 10 or 15 years, someone can't come in and develop it because once it's protected in the PUD as green space, it's locked in as the ordinance.
Just to note that the site plan does have a protected green space in it. That's the that picture that we had with, they actually used it in the color green, but.
Oh, is it?
That was a protected green space because it's in that plan in the PUD.
Apologies. I was confused.
That's okay. No, it's good clarification. I also think this is a higher and better use, and I am a fan. So let's just put that out. Any other discussion? All right.
I have just, sorry, I have just one comment. I I also am not a fan of the digital billboard. I don't see that there is a need. The keep thing, the thought I keep having is why? Why would we need that in the middle of the city versus right along I-35? Beyond that, I I am very impressed with the other aspects of the plan. Thank you.
I'll throw up my hat in the non-digital billboard ring as well. Other than that, I think it's a great project. I I do think it's appropriate for interstate use, but in general, I'm not a big fan of billboards in general. So, you know, I'm, so I'd rather not add to the, and I know it's within ordinance that it can't distract drivers, but the reality is that's what it's intended to do. It's supposed to catch your eye. And especially on a curve, right on the corner right here. It's in the future, if we did move to four lanes on on Classen, it's, I do think that it presents a potential hazard in addition to just a general distraction as far as flipping through different images there. So.
Just a reminder, we could make a comment in a motion affecting to that that allows the project to continue to go through, but with a recommendation. It's not a recommend, what was, remind me, what we, we wouldn't make a recommendation, but we may make a comment added to it that we would like to see a change. So it'd be a comment, not a recommendation, but that could be added into the note of our motion to so it's part of. Any other discussion? I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve with the added comment that we not we not allow a digital billboard to be put in.
And a second?
Second.
And a vote?
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried seven to zero.
Great. Moving to our next item, we have item six. It's an ordinance amendment, consideration of approval rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O-2223-20, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section 5-401, one carport definition, amending section 5-403 of Article 4 of Chapter 5, building construction to add regulations for construction of carports and deleting subsection, deleting section 22-431-10, residential carports in Chapter 22 zoning ordinance, and amending section 22-441 Board of Adjustment to Chapter 22 zoning ordinance to remove the special exception requirement for carports in Chapter 22 zoning ordinance of the Code of the City of Norman to establish new carport standards in Article 4 of Chapter 5 and providing for the severability thereof.
It's a long one.
Love the ordinances. Love those.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Jane Hudson. I'm the Planning Director. And so I want to present to you tonight the amendments that Commissioner Burr just outlined and give you just a little history of the carport ordinance. So I'm sure some of you are not familiar with it, but the discussion regarding the carports has been going on since about 2014. In 2020, we came forward with a discussion, and council determined that they wanted to amend the carport requirements, and so they took it out of Chapter 5, put it into Chapter 22, which is the zoning ordinance, and also attached the requirement that if someone wanted to do a carport that they had to go to Board of Adjustment for a special exception. That added additional fees to the process time. The additional requirements for the design of the carports was more costly than it would have been if it was a metal carport that typically you go by already pre-engineered and and stuff like that. So after the amendments were made, we had many people expressing some complaint, you know, concerns with the process and everything. But nonetheless, here we are, 2022, and we are bringing this change back around to you for your consideration. So we are going to be removing the carport regulations from Chapter 22, removing the carport requirements for the special exception, going to Board of Adjustment. And I just think it's interesting, I want to point out, that in the time that we had these requirements in place, we had nine applications go forward to Board of Adjustment. One was actually constructed, and it was done in the historic district. So it had also gone to HD, and they had additional requirements for HD that were above and beyond what we were requiring in Chapter 22. So, you know, we had COVID. The cost of materials had gone up. So I think that there's probably many factors that that play into this that we we didn't have any built. But nonetheless, I wanted you to have that information as well. So within Chapter 5, we are applying this new definition that you see here. We are removing this information regarding no metal carport. These are what's existing in Chapter 5 right now. So we're just taking these out so we can clear it up with the new information that we're going to be putting in. But we're removing the no-metal roof. The sides cannot be covered. The support requirements, there was some sizing as far as the gauge and sizing of the poles that we're going to be supporting the carport, taking that out of Chapter 5. And then there were some requirements for the side support spacing. It could be no closer than 10 feet. So it's just really cleaning Chapter 5 up to bring this new requirement back into Chapter 5. And like I said, taking it out of Chapter 22. So the carports will be allowed in any zoning district as long as they're meeting the standards that we've got proposed in the ordinance. Obviously, there's a building permit still required. They're still required to be open on all sides, except if they are attached to a home. Of course, we'll have the one side that is is not open. The overall coverage is still going to be required to adhere to the zoning that they're going into. You know, it does come down to a maintenance issue, so we're, you know, they, overall, maintenance of the structure needs to be kept up. They obviously need to be located on a hard surface. If there is existing gravel and it has been maintained, then they can put it over the gravel, but no new gravel can be put down for the installation of a carport. No closer than seven feet to the front property line, which was already in there. No, no change there. Side yard setback, we are changing that and allowing them to go up to a foot within the side yard because there again, if they came closer than the five feet, they would have to go back to Board of Adjustment. And as a reminder, the majority of the places that we're seeing these carports is the core area, the older homes, single-car garages, very narrow driveway, and it's very hard for people to get a carport in there and not be closer than the five feet. So we we propose to put that in there as well. There has to be an existing dwelling on the lot. There is a requirement for the gauge of the metal to be at 29. You can have no fabric or tarps for the carport. Of course, you have to meet the building code. That's understood. It shall not exceed the height of the dwelling structure, and you do have to apply the appropriate guttering to keep the water on your property and not negatively impacting adjacent property owners. I just threw a couple pictures in there. These are existing carports that we have around town. They can vary in different designs and such, but I just threw those in there for you as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have about the carport ordinance.
I have just one. There has to be a dwelling structure. Why was that?
Because a carport is for a residential structure, I mean, a residential use. So if we allowed somebody to put a carport on a vacant lot, then I'm just not sure it would fit as a residential use for that lot. I mean, if it's R1 or 2 or 3, we think that there should be a dwelling, you know, there to serve that carport. The carport should be there to serve that dwelling.
Sure. I was just imagining something, you know, on the fringe of town where there's nothing developed, but maybe you want to have a spot where you just park your car.
So here's the key. So you're talking about the fringe of town in the sense of of A2 zoning or A1 zoning.
Okay.
In the zoning code, A1 and A2 are not defined as residential. So you would be able to do that.
Thank you.
Also, some areas of the fringe of town are not actually City of Norman, too. So it's always good to remember that we do have unincorporated land that we has a City of Norman mailing address but isn't actually part of the zoning. Great. Any other questions for the city staff slash applicant? I had one just comment to make. Just a reminder, the, an addition, when it's developed, can also have covenants, conditions, and restrictions that would not allow a carport to go in. That is an entirely set of rules that are decided upon about the property owners that is different from city rules. So it doesn't necessarily mean a carport can be built everywhere just because zoning on there. There are other factors that go into. There are other factors that go into permission and uses besides just what the city puts out.
Absolutely.
Thought I'd make a point about that.
Yes, absolutely.
One question. Was there not, in the old ordinance, was there not a restriction that the carport could not extend into the city's right-of-way or close to a sidewalk? Does this provide the owner some latitude regarding the placement of the carport? At least the part that's closest to the street?
So they can extend out to within seven feet of the front property line?
Okay.
Which is the same thing. It's been that way all the way through. That was when it was in Chapter 5. We brought that over to 22, and then we're just taking it back to 5 as well.
Thank you.
I have one question. So you mentioned that some of the zoning changes are helpful for, you know, in the internal areas where it's small lots, small houses. But then you also mentioned that they can't put gravel unless it's been there. What, and this could be completely out of the purview of this, but what if someone wanted to convert their little garage, because no cars really fit into the old garage anymore, into a room, and they want to put a carport, but that's currently driveway that, or just yard? Like if they remodel, is that just all completely a different?
So, let me see if I'm mentioning.
Yeah, sorry.
No, no, it's okay.
It wasn't very succinct, but I had a concern, because I don't want to put limitations. I want houses and, you know, people to be able to use their land the best of their needs.
So, core area, older homes, single-car garage, they convert that to a new living room or a bedroom or whatever. I can't, just off the top of my head, I can't think of an area where we wouldn't already have an existing driveway, single drive, you know? So they can take that carport.
And just put it right there.
And they can place it over the existing driveway. Sometimes we actually get individuals that, you know, they're in, again, the smaller homes. They have the single-car drive, but they want to put up a double carport. So they would use the existing drive. They can come out, they can bump out one way or the other on their property and get the additional area for parking, as long as they're not going over the 65%. So they'd have to adhere to that. But yes, they can absolutely use that front area.
But would it be required to be cement poured to extend that versus gravel put in place? Because drainage issues are.
Gravel is really considered an impervious parking area because it, you know, gets packed down and it's essentially running off just like concrete. But no, in the zoning code, we do not allow new gravel to be laid for parking areas. It will have to be a concrete area.
Thank you.
Speaking from personal experience, having a project go through the city that involved gravel, it's actually a little hard to get done. It's hard to add new gravel in central city areas. So they, in general, you have, they have to be very thoughtful, and they put a lot of consideration. They do not do that willy-nilly, I will say, from personal experience, so. Yeah, and I did think of an example. Historic neighborhoods sometimes have a two-lane, like the tire-track driveway. So just a thought, I mean, that would also typically fall into the historic commission, which is also getting reviewed. But I'm not sure how this ordinance might affect those if that is considered the same, fully paved, that would allow the carport or not, but just something.
That's addressed in the zoning code as well, and it does give them the allowance to have those ribbons within that historic district area.
And the ribbons would count towards the, for the need for a carport in this new ordinance, too, then? That's, I guess, my only question, because a lot of it. Or is it something we maybe want to think about? I don't know.
I'm not sure I understand your question, though. So if they're going to put a carport, if they're in HD and they want to put a carport in, because they're in HD, they would be allowed to have those ribbons?
And that counts towards, so the part of the carport requirement in the new ordinance is that it's built over an impervious surface?
Right.
Do the ribbons count towards that impervious surface?
Yes.
It may probably be a non-issue.
They do, but also this is going to HD as well, so it would be reviewed by HD, so, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I would take a motion. Second?
I'll second it.
And a vote?
You may vote. That was fast. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried seven to zero.
Moving to miscellaneous discussion, does staff have any miscellaneous information for the commission?
I distributed calendars for 2023 meetings for all of you.
Thank you. Do Commissioners have any comments they'd like to make? I just have a, one administrative reminder. So next meeting, we have to vote on a new, I guess it's organizational, the chair, the vice chair, the secretary. So if anybody is interested in one of those roles, I guess, just make sure to speak up and just be ready that that's coming next meeting for those changes.
So I would just simply say, make sure you're here. If not, you might get voted in.
That's a tremendous idea. All right, great. If there's nothing else to come before the commission, I declare the meeting adjourned.